Bring this meeting to an end for May 27th, ready council meeting of Elgin County. Welcome, everyone. We have a great crowd in chambers today. It's a great season faces that we don't normally see too often. Next approval agenda.
And just to note that consideration of item 8.1 will be deferred until after the closed meeting session. So the resolution is resolved that the agenda for the May 27th, 2025 county council meeting be approved as amended.
Mover and second please. Pence and Latham. All in favor? Motion carries. Next. We have introduction, recognition, memorials. I don't think we have any today. So the next one up is adoption of the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on May 13th, 2025 be adopted.
Mover and second please. Noble and Cookett. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we have disclosure, peculiary interests, general each or thereof. Go ahead, Councilor Whitner.
Okay, 6.1 CW 2516 Port Talbot Hill Reconstruction.
Thank you. Duly noted. No others. Next, going down to presenting petitions, presentations and delegations. First, we have Dr. Nin Tran, our medical officer of health for the Southwest Public Health, an update on measles. Welcome, Nan. Come up to the podium.
Thank you, and thank you for having me present today. So my name is Dr. Nin Tran. I'm the medical officer of health for Southwestern Public Health. That includes Oxford County, Elgin County, and the city of St. Thomas. I'm here to present on the update on the ongoing measles outbreak that we're experiencing, what our public health response is, and as well as some of the messaging and how you can help support the messaging and to protect our citizens. Next slide. So this is our current situation. So that is about a week old. When I submitted it, we are now up to 700 cases reported to us since October 2024. So we're still having ongoing activity, but the trends and who it's impacting remain the same. This is an illness that is predominantly affecting those who are not up to date in their vaccinations, particularly those who have never had a dose of measles containing vaccine. And most of our cases are in school age children, or particularly children in those 18 and under. Next slide. And so the next slide really shows a little bit more in detail of what that looks like. Again, the the numbers are very similar as of yesterday. The unimmunized who we know have zero doses is now up to 88%. 4.7, about 5% are unknown. And we have 3% to have one or two doses. So, you know, the vaccine against measles is highly, highly effective. It's not 100% effective, but it dramatically reduces the risk of contracting the illness. And those who contracted despite having vaccinations tend to have milder illness. And roughly three quarters of our cases are those who are 18 and under. We are seeing some hospitalizations. We are now up to 46 cases who have experienced hospitalizations at some point in their illness, and that represents 6.5% of the cases. We know there are a lot of cases that are unreported to us. So we do know that the hospitalization rate is lower than 6.5%, but it still shows that, you know, most people recover fine without hospitalization, but there are a small number that do experience hospitalization. And the average stay is 3.3 days. So some experience shorter stays, but some do experience longer stays. Next slide. So this is a curve representing our outbreak. And so at the bottom is really when the cases happen. So we define the episode data as when the classic rash appears. And the height of the bars is really the number of cases. So we saw about 26 cases in 2024, and we had a sort of slowdown for a good part of December and January, and then it started picking up again, particularly in February. We think that that period of slowdown wasn't really a slowdown of activity, but more of a slowdown of undetection, not reporting to us. And then we got a, you know, significant amount of activity, particularly in February or March, started to go down a bit. But then, you know, we've had some sort of ups and downs. So we're still having some ongoing activity in cases. But, yeah, and, and hopefully it'll slow down more towards the summer. Next slide. Who in terms of measles itself, just a little bit of a background, measles is a reportable disease to local public health. It's probably one of the most, if not the most contagious reportable disease that we have. It's something that can result in complications, whether that includes diarrhea, ear infections, and pneumonia, and that contributes to some of the hospitalizations that we're seeing. And but rarely measles can lead to brain infections and even rarely death. And it is, the great thing about it is we have a vaccine that's highly effective. It's been around for over 50 years. It's been studied worldwide, and it can really drastically reduce transmission. And one of the challenging parts for measles is how quickly it can be transmitted. It is spread pretty easily through the air when a person either coughs, sneezes, or even breathes and talks. And the virus can linger up to two hours after that individual has left that indoor space. So you can be both directly exposed as well as indirectly if you happen to share the same airspace as someone who was there within the last couple hours. And if you're not vaccinated, a highly high chance of acquiring vaccination, acquiring infection. The other challenging part is that the initial symptoms are nonspecific. You're talking about fever, cough, runny nose, as well as red eyes. That can be symptoms of many other viral illnesses. And the rash appears last. And you can be infectious, you'd be infectious four days before the rash appears and four days after. So I think the issue is that some people are transmitting the infection when they think they just have a regular cold. And then when they, by the time they have the rash, there's always, there's always already been exposures to a number of individuals by that time that gets detected. Next slide. So in terms of the role of public health, we have a, so these are some of the larger buckets of roles that we have. I'll go through the next slide and talk about a bit more details about what we're doing specifically during this outbreak. So the bread and butter of public health in terms of infectious diseases, case and contact management, as well as surveillance. So surveillance, as we mentioned before, showed you like the curve. We track cases. We try to understand some of the demographics of the cases, including also vaccination status, and, you know, where they've been or when they were infectious. Once we identify cases, we certainly want to make sure they get, you know, appropriate care. We work with our healthcare providers on that. And but we also want individuals to to stay at home and sort of be isolated until they're no longer infectious. And the other part of that is contact tracing and management and understanding, once we have a case, understanding where they've been, who they might have exposed, try to inform those who have been exposed to inform them of the risk and measures to take. And ideally, this happens, you know, directly. And so for a number of times, we are able to notify those who have been exposed directly, assess arrests, inform them of the steps they need to take, whether they've been fully vaccinated. So they just need to sort of monitor for signs and symptoms for 21 days, or take some additional actions in terms of staying home if they haven't been vaccinated, or, you know, avoid individuals who are at higher risk of complication. So like infants, pregnant women, those who are immunosuppressed. But at times, we're not able to notify individuals directly. So that's where you see those public notifications in media releases, but also on our webpage where we have a list, a running list really of where we know exposures have happened. That's so that's when we're not able to notify or identify those who've been exposed and or notify them in a timely manner. So we rely on on that as one additional tool to help individuals understand like their risk and what things to do. And on our webpage, we also have an online exposure assessment tool. So you, you've been to one of those places, or you think you've been exposed, you, you type in, essentially, you click in like your, your age, vaccination status, that sort of thing. And it uses an algorithm, and it tells you what your risk is and what you should be doing based on your age and vaccination status, and whether you work in, in a high-risk settings, particularly, for example, as a healthcare worker. But we know that there's a lot of underreporting of cases. So I wouldn't, you know, recommend that people just solely rely on notification to understand the rest. The best way to protect oneself is through vaccination. We also do communication. Lots of, you've probably seen lots of media exposures, media interviews, notifications. You know, this form is like one of the other methods we use to try to communicate to different sort of groups. And vaccination immunization is particularly key, and I'll go through that in more detail in the next slide of the significant amount of efforts we've done to enhance vaccination access and uptake through our own clinics, Southwest Public Health, but also through our healthcare providers. And we work with schools, hospitals, and other partners to do this response, including any sort of outbreak control measures. And that may include excluding individuals who've been exposed, but, you know, are going to the safe, who are unvaccinated and going to schools in trying to reduce the spread further. Next slide. So here's some of our more specific tailored response to this outbreak. We're doing a lot of targeted outreach and multi-language messaging. We know that our community is very diverse. It has many different subpopulations, many different sort of cultures. So we do work with lots of different cultural and faith-based leaders to to get our message across. We want to have individuals of all sorts of backgrounds, not experience any barriers to getting timely, reliable information. And we work with individuals in their communities in terms of understanding the best way and method to get that information across. So that may include translations. People need information in different languages. We'll work with translation that way. We'll try to understand the medium. For some people, it's print. For some people, social media. For some individuals, it's it's radio. And who delivers that message? Sometimes they do want it directly from us. Sometimes they want it from one of our, like our nurses. And at times, they would prefer to be more receptive, getting that information through their community organizations, through, you know, their, their community leaders. And we will provide that information, if it gets sort of adjusted in terms of language to make it, you know, better received by by the groups, we'll do that. So we'll work with individuals wherever they're at. So we were grateful for some of the individuals who have, during this outbreak, have chosen to get vaccinated. That's, you know, that's been really helpful. And for others who, who, you know, weren't, who weren't at the place, stage to get vaccinated, you know, to work with us in terms of being able to recognize signs and symptoms, you know, staying at home, especially if they know they've been exposed, and calling ahead to healthcare institutions like hospitals, primary care, to limit the spread of others. The other part is enhanced vaccination strategy. And so, you know, like in general, prior to the outbreak in Ontario, you get your two doses of MMR measles containing vaccine. So one at the age of one, and one at the age of between four to six years. And that was a very useful strategy when we had very limited of any measles cases, you know, in the province. So what we did was, once we started getting activity in our region, looked at ways of enhancing that. So one of the things we did was having an additional dose from six to 11 months. That's is not a new practice in general. That's always been the case, at least in Canada, for many, many years. If you were traveling to a place of concern, and historically, traveling to a place with risk, area of concern meant taking a plane, going to another country when there was activity. We knew that as of the early 2025, we were in area of concern because we were having measles cases and activity. So we implemented that eligibility. We, you know, connected with the province. They were supportive of that. We communicated to our healthcare provider, and we made that as a local eligibility. And, and you will probably see now, like several other health units are now adopting that strategy as well. And we're also moved a, the second dose rather than waiting to four to six years, which again, made sense when there's hardly any measles and spacing out vaccination is good for the medium and long-term protection. But when you're faced with, you know, a current outbreak, waiting that time to get, you know, a little bit higher protection, five, 10, 20 years down the road, didn't really make sense. So we, we made that second dose, you know, early to get it. You have to wait at least four weeks, but definitely earlier than four to six years. Again, you're seeing many other health units, particularly in the southwest region, now starting to adopt that as well. So what that has resulted with is, in addition to the eligibility, actually more doses of vaccine in arms. So within our own southwestern public health clinics, we more than doubled the amount of vaccine we administered from the same period this, this year, from January to April, compared to 2024, more than doubled. So we, we, we had additional appointments in our own community clinics. We did outreach clinics to sort of different communities. We even did like home visits as well as a school-based clinics, especially those who who had some measles exposures. We also more than doubled the number of vaccines that was ordered by healthcare providers. So this isn't us just dumping a bunch of vaccines to the healthcare providers. This is healthcare providers ordering from us because they saw an increase in demand based, based on this. I mean, we certainly need a lot more people to get vaccinated, but just give a sense of, of the work we've done to enhance our vaccination. And we certainly work with our local healthcare providers. I'm in fairly regularly contact with our hospitals, primary care, as well as neighboring health units, as well as, as well as the provincial groups, whether that's Public Health Ontario or the Ministry of Health. And certainly, lots of discussion of the schools, hospitals, and other community partners. Next slide. Yeah. So I sort of mentioned this before. We, we partner with a lot of different community organizations who can do a direct outreach who have connections to very, very specific groups, working with multilingual materials and campaigns, whatever, you know, the group sort of needs and is more receptive to, and working at times with trusted leaders in the community, including cultural and faith-based groups. Next slide. So this is my second last slide. So, so the, the two main messages we have is related to the two-pronged approach, really. It's about vaccination, but it's also about infection prevention and control. We certainly want individuals to get vaccinated. Sometimes that does mean checking your immunization records to make, you know, to, because you, we want ideally two doses if you were born 1970 or after. And I know, like, it can be challenged, understanding your, your vaccination records. I grew up, I mean, I think many of you as well, with the yellow cards. Then you get the yellow card, you get your vaccine, your doctor fills it out. And then sometimes you forget to bring a yellow card. The next time you get a vaccine, you get a new yellow card. And at some point, you have multiple yellow cards somewhere in your house, and, and, you know, you'd have to transcribe it. So that, we recognize that can be a challenge until one day we get like a immunization registry where we don't have to manually track it on a piece of paper. And the other part is, is preventing spread to others. If people have had exposures or have had measles, again, watching for early symptoms, and particularly for any cold symptom, if individuals know they might have been exposed to measles, staying home, you're sick. And if you have concerns that you've, you might have contracted measles, seeking medical advice, but also calling ahead to hospitals or to primary care if you absolutely need medical care. We prefer people just like, if they're able to just manage it at home, we can sort of, you know, we provide information how to do that, so that, you know, unnecessarily go to, to healthcare institutions and accidentally expose others. But we know that there are times when people absolutely need medical attention. Don't wait, but then please, please call ahead. Final slide. So in terms of how everyone can help, I think if you can sort of share some of that messages with your networks or in other opportunities where your individuals are talking about it. I mean, you are all very trusted leaders representing your community. You have lots of interactions. And this is also to help, you know, provide you with, with information that we know. Happy to answer any questions so that you, you feel a bit more confident if and when anyone asks you or talks you about measles. You can also direct residents to our, to us, and particularly our website for credible information, www.swpublichealth.ca/measles. We have even like people who want to know like where we at in terms of measles and our case counts. We have weekly dashboards on that, but also a lot of information in terms of potential exposure sites, and all sorts of questions. And we, we update that based on what people have asked us for. And yeah, just if you can reinforce the importance of immunization. Again, this is not like a new vaccine. This is a highly effective vaccine. It's been around for 50-plus years. Still, still as effective as ever. Thank you. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Tran. Any questions? Counselor Latham, go ahead.
Deputy Warden Jones to the doctor. Thank you for your presentation. When you've had measles, can it reoccur? Or is it a one thing, and then you're done with it?
Generally, you should be protected lifelong. Sorry. So generally, you should be protected lifelong with it. So once you've, you've had it, you shouldn't, in general, be able to acquire it again.
Counselor Cookett, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Thank you to Dr. Tran for your report. Certainly, it shows the extent of the response that Southwest Public Health Unit has shown. Your last slide kind of answered my question because this area has, has drawn a lot of media attention. And certainly, the, the media has attempted to contact me as mayor, and maybe others around the table here as to what your community is doing in terms of the measles. And certainly, as I said, this last slide kind of explains what, what, you know, what the municipalities can do. But so, so thank you very much for your report.
Any other questions? Counselor Noble, go ahead.
Through you, Warden. Why are the cases predominantly 18 and under? I was curious as to that.
Sure. So through, through the chair, I mean, that's historically what it would has happened. It's also the social nature and the sort of the type of interactions that those who are 18 and under have. I mean, they're just generally children. If any of you have ever like been parents and been parents of, of young kids, they, they do get sick a lot. They, they do socialize a lot with each other. They mingle a lot with each other, and maybe not as good with, you know, some of the like, you know, hand hygiene, other, so etiquette. So I mean, that's, that's just a general sort of pattern. And then also, if, yeah, the sort of type of interactions kids tend to have with each other, tend, tend to do that. And then, you know, families with larger households, you know, tend to all, all get it as well. And, and then we also, I should note, like, it sort of involves the case about having measles before. In, in general, we would say that those who were born before 1970, so in 1969 and above, are generally presumed to be immune to it. So the measles vaccine wasn't available until the 1970s. And before that, there was a lot of activity happening. So most people, the vast majority of people born before 1970 have already been either exposed or infected previously. It's not, again, 100%, but if you look at our numbers, you look at provincial numbers, you know, you're talking about the high 90s percentage-wise that are born in 1970 and under. So that also contributes to, to that, you know, lowering number because you're taking an age group, you know, born before 1969, generally out of the equation from, from, you know, getting measles at this point.
Any further question? Go, go ahead, Paul.
Through you again, Warden. So when was the last time we saw numbers in this range? Like, I always kind of get a kick out of the history part of this.
Sorry, turn it back off. So through the chair, approximately three or so years ago, measles was eliminated in Canada around 1996. And it was, and, and that's around the time where the, the routine two-dose MMR vaccine series was. So it's been at least about three decades since we've seen this sort of numbers.
Anything further? Not seen any? So, oh, sorry, Counselor Whitner, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through to Dr. Tron. Just have a question. If a person's unsure of their vaccination status, can they get a vaccination anytime, any age? Or is that something that's not advisable?
So through, through the chair. So anyone who's really six months in age and older can get it. I mean, certainly, you still need two doses starting at the age of one. So anyone who's under six months, so the only three groups that absolutely can't get the vaccination are those who are under six months, those who are pregnant or have significant immunocompromising condition. The, the MMR measles containing vaccine is what's called a live attenuated vaccine. So it's not dead. It's live, but barely alive. And for people with regular intact immune systems are fine with it. It's just those individuals who are immunocompromised, either due to age, you know, if they're pregnant or the immune cause can't get it. So if you're unsure, there's generally two options. It's to one, like get a blood test to see whether you're immune to it, or the second is to get a vaccination. My general recommendation and most recommendations is just to get the, if you know you have one, you're not sure you have the second, just, just get, you know, the, the one additional dose. There is like, certainly, there's always like a, any sort of small risk of sort of side effects of vaccine, but it probably beats the, the, the risk of, you know, getting your blood drawn and sort of checking it. And you still might need the vaccine anyways, but I think it's, it's up for the individual. So in, in general, if you're born after 1970 and you're really unsure, probably a good idea to just get another dose.
Anything further? If not, thank you so much for coming in, Dr. Tran. Appreciate the update and all the hard work you're putting into this. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me here, and thank you for your good questions. Thanks.
Resolved that the presentation from Southwestern Public Health be received and filed.
Mover and second please. Counselor, Deputy Warden, Ketsba, and Counselor Cookett. All in favor? Motion carries. Next up, we have Brenda Fleming, Executive Director, and Rob, Robert Frenel, Board Next up, we have Brenda Fleming, Executive Director, and Rob, Robert Furnill, Board Chair, and Barry Fitzgerald, Hospice Community Volunteer, and a, and a few others in attendance for Hospice of Elgin presentation. Welcome. The floor is yours, Brenda.
Good morning, Warden Jones and members of council. I'm Brenda Fleming. I'm the Executive Director of Hospice of Elgin. And I'm joined today by our Board Chair, Robert Furnill. And also joining us is Barry Fitzgerald, a proud Elgin County resident and a community supporter of our hospice. As you can see, several other of our board and community members have also joined us to share in the greater message we bring. It's our hope that collectively we can compel you to join us to support the exceptional heartfelt care for individuals and their precious families throughout the county of Elgin at the end of life. Next slide, please. Imagine what this feels like for many in our county today. Over 800 people die in Elgin County each year with approximately 11% of those individuals with a palliative diagnosis dying in a ward in the hospital or in the emergency department. As our local aging population grows, so too will these sobering statistics. An increasingly larger proportion of our seniors are living and dying alone without family or community supports. These individuals are falling through the cracks. These, they, they don't qualify for long-term care, they don't require acute care, and they struggle alone with complex physical, emotional, and spiritual constraints.
Families are also suffering. Every person in the palliative stage of their journey, at least four others are deeply impacted emotionally. And to the degree that they identify the need for some level of professional counseling or complex grief and bereavement support. This is the heart of hospice services. And just a few of the harsh facts why hospice matters so much to the people of this county. Elgin residents have demonstrated their support for hospice. This hospice, in a very tangible and meaningful way. Over 600 of our existing 1,100 donors are directly from this very county. That's over 50%. That's more than 600 households and businesses in Elgin which have vested with their hearts and have clearly expressed that they are behind us all the way. Hospice of Elgin is a true resource which will benefit everyone in this community in, in some way. So today we're asking for you to stand in partnership for all residents of the county of Elgin.
Next slide. Hospice is both a place and a philosophy, allowing individuals and families to make room for life at life's end. It's a unique service where health and social services come together to relieve pain and suffering and improve the quality of life. Hospice philosophies are not based on user pay or membership type, type of financial models. Hospice is available free of charge for absolutely everyone. The relief of pain and suffering is not a nice to have, it's a fundamental human right. Our services are specifically designed to make room for life at life's end, where families can just be families again, not nurses, not caregivers, not providers, not visitors, just together. It's also a place where no one suffers alone. It's both a duty and an honor for absolutely every member of our hospice team to make each precious moment matter for those that have the, for those that we have the privilege to deliver exceptional care at end of life. Please allow me a brief moment to share with those that may not know me that well, why this resonates so strongly with me and why I feel Hospice of Elgin is critically important. Next slide, please. So this photo represents my family. Those are the most important to me. In the middle are my two children, Amanda and Kate. Both of were born at St. Thomas Elgin General Hospital. And my spouse, Andy, immediately to the left, grew up in Southold Township in Iona. Andy's pictured with his father, Lou, who lived with his wife and five children in Iona for almost two decades. In the top left are my maternal aunts, or more like sisters. They were raised on the shores of Lake Erie and Triconal. I too was born in Elgin. I grew up in Wallistown, where my parents and my sister still reside today. Hospice matters to me. It's not because of my job, it's because of all the people you see in this photo. My grandfather, on the far left, died at South Street Hospital in London. None of his grandchildren had the opportunity to visit with him in his final days or to say goodbye. My grandmother, on the far right, died in the hospital, suffering from a hospital-acquired infection that she got in the hospital receiving palliative care because there was nowhere else for her to receive it. My mother-in-law lived alone for several years and was admitted to long-term care, not because she needed that level of care, but because she lived alone and she could no longer take care of herself as her ALS, ALS symptoms progressed. Yet another member of my family opted for medical assistance in dying as they felt the burden of care on the family as they entered their final days was too much to bear. I'm sure these stories are familiar for many families in Elgin. I want better for my parents, my children, and for myself, quite frankly, and for everyone else in Elgin County in the future. We deserve nothing less. I'd like to welcome Barry Fitzgerald to join us now, and he's going to share a little bit more about why hospice is so important to him. Barry, over to you.
Thank you. I bring this message also from my primary caregiver, Lori, my wife, who unfortunately has a cold and is unable to join us today. So we're both residents and taxpayers of Central Elgin. I've owned and operated several businesses in Elgin County over the last 40 years. Unfortunately, I've suffered some major health challenges over the last eight years, and I'm now palliative. Today, I'm here to advocate on behalf of the Hospice of Elgin, a service that's much needed and will give end-of-life comfort and care for many of our residents. I've had the opportunity with my mother-in-law entering hospice in her community to win firsthand what a blessing hospice was for her and her family in her final days. I remember going to the hospice and as she was, as my mother-in-law was being wheeled out, the entire volunteer group and staff all stood at attention and formed an honor guard while the funeral director took the body away to the hearse. It was powerful. A portion of the care proposed by Hospice of Elgin will provide a much-needed pause to caregivers like my wife to take a break from the constant demands of caring for a palliative person. I know counsel has been presented with a business case outlining the financial impact of hospice care. It just makes good use of taxpayers' dollars. While I may or may not be able to take advantage of hospice of Elgin services in the future, I wanted you to have a face for those who go behind me, who will benefit from Hospice of Elgin. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry, for sharing your personal thoughts on hospice with us. Your voice matters. Hopefully in some meaningful and tangible way, it will impact, I think, the success, the stability, and the sustainability of Hospice of Elgin for generations to come. Everyone has their own definition of partnership. Earlier this month, my wife, Colleen, and I celebrated our 33rd wedding anniversary, giving us both decades to reflect back upon. Her gift to me was this very simple but precious card. No, you can't see it from there, but I'll explain it. Do you? It's a large heart-shaped puzzle with one piece, one smaller heart that's off to the side. It's a missing link, if it were, which fills a void and binds the bigger heart together. Inside the card, it simply reads, "You complete me," to which he added the words, "in every way." There's other things on the cards as well, but I will leave that off on the personal side. I wish we had one of these cards for each of you because I think it really does symbolize so much more than just a person-to-person relationship. It's something more deep-seated. I think it reflects in very simple symbols what our hospice and what our vision of partnership is, and that is in it together. Our hospice version of a card would simply read, "You complete us." The partnership we seek today is not one grounded in existing policy nor past practice, but a courageous and innovative declaration which brings it, with it, a much bolder commitment to support everyone living in Elgin County at the end of life. Hospice must be a community resource, supported and embraced by community for community. For those of you around this table and in this chamber represent the voice of this community and much of the pivotal decision-making for Elgin. In that responsibility, we urge you to recognize the value of partnering with us at this monumental time of our shared history. We're not here today for a nominal contribution. We're here asking the collective county of Elgin to stand with us in true strategic partnership as both the province of Ontario and the city of St. Thomas have done. A partnership which includes not only the meaningful financial support, but strong advocacy, shared knowledge and resources, and an ongoing commitment to make end-of-life care the very best it can be for everyone we both serve in Elgin County. Today, we hope we've touched each of you in some personal way. We've shared some personal stories about connection, relationship, partnership, and as well, just life. In short, what matters. Thank you for your time this morning, and we welcome any questions this council may have for our team. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Questions? Counselor Cookett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for that presentation, certainly moving. I guess, I guess I'm reminded, and you, you touched upon it, that you're talking about the impact on taxpayers and that kind of thing, and it being a, a positive, that the hospital is, is a positive way to go. And you haven't asked for anything specifically. You did mention advocacy and, and resource sharing, and I'm sure we can do some, some of that, certainly. I just, as a comment, I just want to remind people, I know that the argument is that, you know, supporting the hospice in the hospital and, and items like that are not the mandate of, of, you know, county government. But I'd just like to remind people that the mandates for schools and the mandates for police have changed considerably over the last decade or so. And, you know, they're, both, both the schools and the, and the police are engaged in activities that is not basically their mandate. So something to consider when we think about helping, you know, areas like the hospice and the hospital. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Whitner, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. A couple, just one question. I recently had a friend and neighbor that went through assisted death. Is that allowed at the hospice? And if not, what does it look like? How does it happen? Thank you.
Through you, Chair. One of the things that, that hospice does is provide exceptional palliative care and relief of symptoms and, and pain. So with that, the hope is that we can celebrate life until the end of natural life. So medical assistance in dying will not be a service that Hospice of Elgin provides. However, we do absolutely respect and honor the individual choices and the, the journey that each individual is on throughout their life. So should that be part of their journey? We will be working with other care team members to ensure that their wishes can be honored and that their care can be transferred at the appropriate time so that those, those procedures, that assessment and those procedures can in fact take place as per their wishes.
Counselors, you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Thank you. So through you, Mr. Warden, thank you to our presenters for, for this, for this presentation. I, I agree. Very well done in presenting your case. So I just wanted to make sure that our presenters are aware of the new policies that the, this council has put in place to help decision-making in, in this area and to help explore ways to partner with different organizations in the community. So, and if not, then I would encourage our presenters to work with staff to perhaps come back with a, a specific request under that policy. And I think, I, I believe now this council is better equipped to have the discussion and has the tools to consider a more direct financial ask. Thank you.
Thank you through you, Chair. We are aware of the policy, but as Robert has mentioned in his presentation, in our analysis of that, of that policy, we did not see the level of partnership that we were looking for, that, that standing together and, and supporting the people of Elgin in its totality. We are not like other charitable organizations in, in the county. And so we really felt that we wanted to come here today outside of that policy or past practice that this council may have, have afforded themselves and, and really implore you to, to, to think about Hospice of Elgin a little bit differently.
Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and through you to Brenda, I guess you're the one to direct the question to. Thank you and your team for your presentation this morning. The question I have is perhaps a little more pragmatic. Where are you in your funding campaign at this point?
Thank you, Robert. I can, I can share with you that we did have, and we do have a, a capital campaign goal of $17 million. We added $1.5 million to that for the furniture and equipment that's required to outfit the residential hospice that has been, been constructed and we will be moving into in the very near future. However, as, as I'm sure has been shared at, at this council before and is in the business case, the, the public funding through the Ministry of Health is only for the direct nursing and PSW costs in the, the eight residential hospice beds. We have services far outside of that that we want to bring to, to the residents of Elgin County. Recognizing the sheer size of the county and the location of a residential hospice, we want to be able to offer a palliative care hub where people can come in for the day, return home, or receive palliative services in a virtual environment. So all of that will be funded by the local community and forms part of those additional, those additional resources. We are currently about $1 million away from our goal. So we are not complete, as Roger, Roger, Robert has said. We are close, but we are missing that, that one key partnership that will allow us to, to reach our campaign goal and, and open our doors wide open later this year for all the residents. So we are looking for, for an additional $1 million, not specifically from this council, but from the broader community that is inclusive of this council to help us reach our campaign goal.
Just go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just to clarify, then, the extra $1 million is part of the funding for the capital side of the extra services you wish to do?
Capital and, and some of that operating, because that, those operating dollars, those, those costs will be, will be part of that, that community resources. So our ability to ramp up and offer the full breadth of services is directly dependent on our fundraising success in the local community.
Any other questions? Counselor Hens, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for the presentation. Brenda, good to see you. Heartfelt presentation.
Heartfelt presentation. A lot of the people in your photos are my neighbors and friends. So I, I get, um, how touching this subject is, and, and I just want to echo Counselor Cookett's comments as well. I know full well that municipalities, um, venture outside of their mandates. We do it for reasons that, uh, maybe senior levels of government don't provide enough. So we find ourselves caught up in that. So, um, this is a difficult decision for, for any council when we struggle to meet our, our mandated requirements. But it's certainly something that, uh, I think warrants a, a second look or, uh, staff to have a, a closer look as well. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Anything further, uh, Counsel, Counselor Whitner, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, maybe through to Brenda. It is a good presentation and you bring up some good points. It's a dignified way to die. I remember my grandparents, I mean, when they get to the point, they ship them off to the hospital, they're there for two or three weeks and it's not very nice. Hospice is a great thing. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further questions or comments?
Mr. Warden, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you so much and, and through you, um, so I, I echo, uh, what is being said around the chamber and, um, uh, but I just want to say that the, the policy as written, uh, may not be on the surface, the perfect fit, um, for your organization, but I would strongly encourage, um, the group to, uh, apply through that process or to, to make a, a request through that process. Because I, I believe for council, it would provide a structured mechanism to bring the requests. And then, um, we have discretion to, to then can consider, uh, an, an exception outside of the policy or a, a multi-year, uh, approach. So I, I, I would reiterate my earlier point, but I think the best way to bring this forward and for council to think outside of the box is to bring something in the box, then demonstrate to what extent it fits or doesn't fit, and then allow us to have the discussion. Um, so my two cents on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, Counselor Giger. Counselor Henshey, could you offer an amendment to the resolution to bring back for discussion with, uh, staff and, and the hospice?
So, thank you, Mr. Warden. I, I think this falls back to staff as we do have a policy in place. So if, uh, they want to have a look at it and, and I think it's a discussion worth having around this table again. But with the policy in place, I think it's staff driven.
Yeah.
At this point in time, and at a future meeting, if, if we want to open up that discussion, do we alter the policy or? I don't have an answer for that.
Okay, um, thank you. Counselor Cookett?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I think, uh, I think the next move is up to the hospice is, uh, Counselor Giger has mentioned, uh, come back with an ask and we'll have a discussion at that time. Thank you.
Hey, anything further? Not seeing any further questions or comments. Thank you so much for coming in. Uh, great presentation, and we hope to hear from you soon. Take care.
Resolved that the presentation from Hospice of Elgin be received and filed.
Mover and seconds, please. Whitner and Noble, all in favor? Motion carries. And we're getting close to the hour mark. Maybe we'll just take a five minute break. Okay, welcome back. So we're going to move into Committee of the Hall, but before we do, uh, we're now going to be voting on all the recommendations of the Committee of the Hall except for CW twenty-five sixteen, which has been an event identified, uh, as declared conflict. If another council identifies any other recommendations from the, to, to be separated, you can add it at this point. Then we'll go from there. Counselors, I see your hand. Are you just?
Yes, yes, Mr. Warden. Um, I was just looking for the number of the, the, the resolution regarding the, the delegation, the, the bylaw for the delegation decision. The land division, sorry, I, I can't pull up the right page in front of me.
Twenty-five seventeen.
CW twenty-five seventeen. So you're asking, asking for that to be pulled out?
Yes, for a separate discussion.
Okay, we'll pull that out as well. So, go ahead, Catherine.
Resolved that items CW twenty-five fourteen to CW twenty-five nineteen from Committee of the Hall meeting dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, with the exception of those items identified for separate discussion and the recommendations therein be adopted.
Point of order, Mr. Warden. Catherine, in that motion, do you need to identify those issues being pulled? How do you, the record reflect that?
Uh, it will be reflected in the minutes.
Action off, one day doesn't identify which ones. Small matter, just to include them.
We can include, uh, that CW twenty-five sixteen and CW twenty-five seventeen are the ones identified for separate discussion.
Okay, mover and a second or to adopt those identified. Whitner and Noble, all in favor? Motion carried. And would you like to do, uh, which one first, then Mark can leave after that?
Uh, we'll first do, uh, CW twenty-five sixteen, uh, so that Counselor Whitner, um, can then come back and join us for CW twenty-five seventeen.
Okay.
So the recommendation is resolved that item CW twenty-five sixteen from the Committee of the Hall meeting dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the recommendations therein be adopted.
Mover and seconds, please. Hens and Latham? Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. And can call Counselor Whitner back in? But Counselor Whitner's back. Counselor Giger, would you like to discuss, uh, land division recommendations?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, yeah, I just wanted to have, to take the opportunity before a final vote to clarify, uh, one component of the bylaw, uh, which goes into or describes the non-contemptious, uh, consent application. And the last bullet point in that criteria talks about, uh, says there are no unresolved objections or concerns raised from agencies or the public. And, um, I wanted to, a little bit more information to understand, um, so how this would be captured. Because, uh, my only concern is that sometimes there are objections and concerns that are raised, uh, during uh, debate even from council and the, at the lower tier and, uh, but they're, they're not missed. They're not recorded as official objection. And I think those, to me, would qualify as, you know, contentious to, because it, it's not a, you know, a clean slate, but the way it's worded, it almost sounds like it would only be objections or concern uh, officially raised. So if we could expand on that some clearer before we, we make a final decision.
Sure, I, I'll, I'll jump in, uh, there. Um, yeah, so through the ward.
Well, 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 just a minute, Matt.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay. Okay, um, so Counselor Giger, would you like to alter the motion or support the initial, uh, one that we have on the books right now?
Uh, at this point, no. So I, I think it may not affect the resolution because it's just seeking clarification and information and not, uh, the debate. So if we could get the clarification first, and then we could consider the motion.
Okay. We need, so we need a motion on the floor to start the, the process. Got, uh, Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Mr. Warden, uh, and I realize that, uh, the proper process is that, uh, Counselor Giger should have the floor for this because she's the one to put it on the floor for, uh, with concerns. There are a number of concerns that I have with this particular, uh, item as well. Uh, I'm not sure it's well enough understood. Uh, I have had opportunity to consult with a colleague across the horseshoe here. I'm wondering if it might be better to put a motion on the floor to defer this decision until after having an opportunity to further consult with members of land division at the horseshoe. Have someone present to do a, uh, to bring forward their concerns so that we have a better understanding. It may simply be public perception. I don't know, but we don't want to mess with the ideals of transparency and, uh, and, and have an uproar over what may or may not be a savings. Suggestion, Counselor Giger.
Um, Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and, uh, Deputy Warden, are you making a motion to defer? Is that, yes?
If in the process I'm allowed to, but I think, uh, Counselor Giger has that prerogative at the moment.
If you're making the, if you're making that motion, I would like to second it if he needs to be on the floor. And then you can discuss Counselor Giger's, uh, questions at the same time.
I, I would agree to make that motion if whatever triggers more discussion.
Go ahead.
Then a motion to defer will have no discussion. It's just, uh, if the motion to defer is put on the floor and seconded and it's voted upon unless there's any questions with respect to the actual motion to defer, but there's no discussion on the item itself, then the vote should be called.
And so Counselor Giger, are you willing to go that route?
Yeah, we, we can defer so that, uh, then all parties are present during the discussion. And if that means then the questions I've raised today can be part of a future discussion, that's fine to have it all at once. That would be fine.
Like, Counselor Cookett?
Uh, in that, you know, in that case, certainly I would second, second the defer motion.
Decided date? Um, next county council meeting? That next committee of the hall, I should say. So would you prefer to defer it back to the next county council meeting or the next committee of the whole, Counselor Giger?
Yeah, I was actually going to suggest, I think, to allow, um, almost like a delegation or more, um, fulsome discussion. Like, I think the deferral motion would refer this matter back to the Committee of the Hall for further discussion.
My apologies, Warden. Um, just for some further clarification, if I can provide to, uh, members of council, uh, what I would suggest is if council is looking for further information solely from staff, then I would say the appropriate, uh, steps to take would be to defer it to the next council meeting. If council wishes further information, uh, brought forward and perhaps through a delegation from members of the public, then I would suggest the next steps would be a referral to, uh, the next committee of the whole meeting. So refer it back to Committee of the Whole.
I see Counselor Giger's head nodding, so.
Do we do delegations at the Committee of the Whole?
Uh, through you, Warden, to Deputy Warden Ketchum, but yes, the opportunity for public, uh, to speak to a report is at Committee of the Whole, not at Council.
So, uh, read the resolution, please. Survey's clear.
Resolved that item CW twenty-five seventeen be referred to the Committee of the Hall meeting on June tenth, twenty twenty-five, and that staff extend an invitation to the Chair of the Land Division Committee to attend.
We have duly moved by Counselor Giger and Counselor Cookett. There you go. Counselor Cookett? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, uh, committee recommendations, we're going to defer eight point one till after closed session so that the rest of the council has a full, some understanding of, uh, that, uh, recommendation. So Catherine, go ahead. Yeah.
Uh, so the next item is eight point two, and just for, since this is the first time we're doing it, just for council's, um, understanding, uh, when we redid our process, we decided that we would be putting draft committee minutes on the council agenda just as they come out. Uh, these have not been approved at their, their own committees. Council doesn't need to take any action. They don't need to receive and file. Uh, it's just that, uh, if we waited until the minutes would be approved at their own committees, they might be quite old by the time they make it to council, depending on the frequency of meetings. So these are just for council's information, but no action needs to be taken.
Okay, moving on, uh, reports for information immediate consideration. Nine point one minute? Yeah? Manager Administrative Services, AMO Conference.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to County Council. At our last Committee of the Hall meeting, uh, I brought a report letting council know that AMO, uh, had their, uh, delegation, uh, request, application forms open and that they would close on May thirtieth. Uh, there was a discussion at council or at Committee of the Whole, and at the time Committee of the Whole provided direction, uh, to, to draft two delegation requests. One was to the Ontario Ministry of Transportation, and it was, uh, related to concerns for the drive-on vehicle inspection system and, um, costs associated with this new system that were being borne by municipalities and ultimately the taxpayer. Uh, so this was attached as a, an attachment to this report, and thank you to Counselor Whitner for his assistance, um, in drafting this. Uh, he helped me with some of the, the particulars. Um, secondly, uh, there was a resolution after a council meeting where we had the West Elgin Community Health Center come and, and do a delegation and talk about their staffing issues and their funding issues. So we, uh, we had at that time, council had, uh, passed a resolution to do a delegation at AMO regarding increased resources for rural healthcare. So, uh, we received feedback from Committee of the Whole that they wanted to pursue, um, this line of a delegation, but wanted to make sure that we didn't duplicate efforts that were happening, um, with our partners or duplicate delegations that we had done recently. So recently at AMO last year, we did a delegation about physician recruitment, um, in partnership with the city of St. Thomas. Um, and we do know that this year again, the health recruitment partnership led by the city of St. Thomas is going to be doing a delegation at AMO. on family health organizations and funding for family health organizations. And so we will be part of that as part of the Health Recruitment Partnership. So we didn't want to overlap that. So we did take the approach of talking about community health centers and their importance to the communities as ways to keep people out of urgent care and emergency rooms, but how they are struggling as a result of a wage gap and that they're not able to retain staff because of that wage gap. So this has also been attached for council's consideration. Additionally, since the agenda was published, I did receive correspondence from the City of St. Thomas, an email asking if the County of Elgin would like to be a partner on a delegation they are putting in on the topic of interregional transit. So I believe that the City of St. Thomas has also asked Middlesex County and the City of London to participate. So in addition to seeking comments and approval on the delegation requests that were attached, I'm also interested in seeking council's approval to tell the City of St. Thomas that we would like to be a partner. They would put that delegation in, that request in, but they would add us as a co-delegate. And then finally, a discussion that was had around the staff table after the agenda had already been released was about an issue that we wanted to get council's consideration and approval to request a delegation to the Ministry of Long-Term Care and then another to the Ministry of the Solicitor General. And it's about vulnerable sector checks. So as a result of requirements under the Long-Term Care Act, before any of our staff start at our long-term care homes, they are required to have vulnerable sector checks the day that they start. The issue is that vulnerable sector checks done by the OPP are taking between six to 10 weeks to be completed. So that's really pushing back our hiring date from the time that a person receives an offer to the time they start could be up to 10 weeks, which is not helping our staffing needs. Problem is that it used to be done at the local detachment, but it's now centralized in Aurelia, so it's taking quite a bit longer. It used, you know, if one of our potential employees lives in, say, Elmer or St. Thomas, it's a much quicker turnaround because it's not done by the OPP, but anyone else living in the county or that in a community policed by the OPP, their vulnerable sector check goes through the OPP. So the recommendations would be to the Solicitor General to ask that for some way for either, you know, long-term care applications to be expedited or maybe a recommendation to return vulnerable sector checks to the local detachments. And then, on the other hand, a similar delegation to the Ministry of Long-Term Care, the request would be to ask if proof that a vulnerable sector check has been submitted could be good enough in the interim to allow someone to start. So in addition to the two that were presented in the report, staff are seeking approval for council to partner with the city for the transit and then also to put in delegations regarding the vulnerable sector check issue. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Definitely, I think we should be in on the regional transit. We're absolutely certain. And I don't think the other one's a bad idea either. Any issues with recommendation? Okay. You have to.
Resolved that County Council approved the draft AMO Conference 2025 delegation requests for submission.
Okay, now, are there any issues with moving that recommendation forward? I know. Counselor Hance, Warden Ketchum, Deputy Warden Ketchum? Any further comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Counselor Giger is frozen by the looks of it. Yeah. Counselor Giger, you've stalled yours. I think we can continue on with correspondence, so. So, council's correspondence. Is there any, I think, obviously the flag raising proclamation request from Child Can? Recognition of Childhood Cancer, I would like to definitely support that as we have in the past. Anything else to highlight there? Not have resolution, Catherine?
Resolved that correspondence items 10.2 and 10.3 be received and filed.
Mover and seconded, please. Whitner and Latham? All in favor? Motion carries.
Resolved that County Council approve a flag raising and proclamation request from Child Can in recognition of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Mover and seconded, please. Counselor Latham, Counselor Cookett? All in favor? Motion carries. Down to the statements and queries and. So statements and inquiries, anything around the table? Deputy Warden Ketchum, go ahead.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Just to remind members of council and anyone interested that June 7th is Edison Fest in Vienna with some friendly competitions. I know that Counselor Cookett was there last year. Counselor Whitner, he got a prize. He takes it daily around in his pickup truck, I understand. The dignitaries are asked to be there about 9:30 in the morning and then a friendly competition of log sawing and nail pounding and whatever else. Maybe there'll be some karaoke, who knows? But I encourage you to come on out for a lot of fun and enjoy the day. So if you're available, please come on down to Vienna. It's at Memorial Park.
Thank you, Counselor Ketchum. Anything further? I know Rosie Rhubarb is the same day, so it is somehow the dates have got locked together. They always used to be a week apart, so I can't be in two places at the same time, so I'm going to ask you to represent the warden for Edison Fest. I wish I could have been there. I love log sawing and my shoulder's good again, so I can do it. So yeah, Rosie Rhubarb's the same day. Open for a big turnout as usual and Town Shed will be jam-packed full of cars and everything else. This is also Accessibility Week. The County of Elgin does a lot of programming around accessibility and I'd just like to recognize the hard work that goes into that throughout the year. So great job from staff with the work they do on that. Anything further? If not, we'll go into closed session.
Resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act Section 239-2. Closed meeting item number one, closed meeting minutes, May 13th, 2025. Closed meeting item number two, Growth Planning Steering Committee, closed meeting minutes, May 13th, 2025. And closed meeting item number three, property matter under Section K, a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. And closed meeting item number four, property matter, under Section C, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board.
Mover and seconded, please. Counselor Noble, Counselor Hance? All in favor? Motion carries. Catherine, go ahead.
Resolved that we do now rise and report.
Mover and seconded, please. Counselor Noble? Counselor Hance? Or we'll get Counselor Giger in there. I keep forgetting to look up. All in favor? Motion carries. And go ahead.
Closed meeting item number one, closed meeting minutes, May 13th, 2025. Resolved that the May 13th, 2025 closed meeting minutes be adopted.
Mover and seconded, please. Counselor Cookett? Counselor Latham? All in favor? Motion carries.
Closed meeting item number three, property matter. Resolved that the confidential report from the Director of Community and Cultural Services be received and filed.
Mover and seconded, please. Counselor Noble? Counselor Hance? All in favor? Motion carries.
Closed meeting item number four, property matter. Resolved that council approved the initiation of discussions with landowners regarding the possibility of establishing the fire training ground in Elgin County.
Mover and seconded, please. Counselor Noble? Counselor Whitner? All in favor? Motion carries. Go back to 8.1, yeah.
Resolved that the recommendations of Growth Planning Steering Committee 25-6 from the Growth Planning Steering Committee meeting dated May 13th, 2025 be approved.
Mover and seconded, please. Counselor Noble? Counselor Giger? All in favor? Motion carries. And bylaws, yes, go ahead.
Bylaw number 2522, confirmation. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the May 27th, 2025 meeting.
Mover and seconded, please. Counselor Latham? Counselor Noble?
Is there renumbering that took place, Catherine? All right.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at 11:03 a.m. to meet again on June 10th, 2025 at 9 o'clock a.m.
Seconded, Deputy Warden Ketchum? Seconded, Counselor Latham? All in favor? Motion carries.